G'day to everyone, welcome. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. It is the 23rd anniversary of 9/11. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderwoman Newton in leading us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
Ardone?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinards?
Yeah.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobgin?
Here.
And Burkeholder?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the city council. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully, we welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. As a reminder for the folks in here, if you'd be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight, please come to the podium when recognized. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will an alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for August 28, 2024?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Gleason, is there a city administrator update tonight?
I have no update. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Will an alderman please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for September 4th, 2024?
Move the report?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation this evening, Hispanic Heritage Month, that will be read by Alderwoman Newton. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Davenport, Iowa proclamation. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationally from September 15th to October 15th, a period that honors the rich cultural heritage, history, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. And whereas this month provides an opportunity for all citizens to reflect on and appreciate the rich legacy of the Hispanic and Latino communities, and to recommit to ensuring that Davenport remains a place where diversity is not only celebrated, but also seen as a source of strength. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino communities have played a vital role in the growth and success of Davenport, contributing to our economic development, cultural diversity, and social fabric. And whereas the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce strives to support, promote, and enhance the growth and success of local businesses and organizations by leveraging assets, contributions, and expertise of the unique Hispanic and multicultural identities. And whereas the City of Davenport acknowledges the challenges and barriers that Hispanics and Latino Americans have faced and continue to face, and stands committed to promoting equity, justice, and opportunity for all. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Madsen and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th of 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Davenport and urge all residents to celebrate and recognize the continuing contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans in our community dated this 11th day of September, 2024. I move the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this proclamation is accepted. And here with us today, Loisa Irut from the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Executive Board Treasurer and Chair of the Legislative Committee, please come up so you can accept the proclamation.
I also have Sergio Mendoza, who's also employed by the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Can somebody send it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go get it. Sorry.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you to the city council, and we invite you all to celebrate with us this Saturday in Silvis and this Sunday as well in East Moline for our two community events that we have going on. Thank you.
And Burkeholder on 5th was also doing a celebration this Friday in Moline. You know, we know how to throw a party, and we're going to have delicious food at all the events, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is petitions and communications. Anyone have, any council members have any? Ms. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will have to miss your wonderful celebrations this weekend because of our Gold Coast Home Tour, September 14th and 15th, this Saturday and Sunday, 12 noon to 4:00 p.m. It's five houses and other sites as well. Information at www.davenportgoldcoast.com. Hope you can join us. The other thing, item I wanted to note was the third ward meeting will be next Monday, September 16th, here in council chambers at 6:30. Our guest will be Brian Ritter with Naham Marsh, and he'll be talking about the expansion of the marsh and other activities that are ongoing in a great location, so I hope you can join us on Monday or this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly, please.
Thank you so much. Just a reminder, the unity in the community block party that'll be this weekend at 1709 North Main, it's the parking lot of JB Young. It'll be across the street from Maine and Locust Pharmacy and KFC. It'll be food vendors, so I hope, fortunately, we'll miss the festivities in Illinois as well, because I'll be eating good on this side of the river. So it's open to the community, so please stop out if you have nothing going on. It'll be a whole bunch of folks from around the Quad Cities selling what they sell and a lot of good food, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Reinards?
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that the eighth ward meeting will be held tomorrow, 6:00 to 7:30 at the Eastern Avenue Library. Look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reinards. Alderwoman Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure today of attending the ribbon cutting for a new business out in Northwest Boulevard, Eve's Garden and Nursery. It's the Old Wallaces on Northwest Boulevard. It's a really wonderful place. Some of you might remember it as Freddy's as well. A local family has opened a business there, and I'm really excited to see what they offer. And they will have Fall Fest this weekend on Saturday, so if you're bored and looking for something to do and support your community, come on out and take a look. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. The first one is a second consideration for ordinance, ordinance for case REZ 24-03 being the request of Davenport Community School District to rezone approximately 12.71 acres of land located at 715 to 909 East 36th Street, from our three single-family and two-family residential district to S1C Institutional Campus District. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman please move second consideration?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second for second. Any discussion from all their folks? Seeing none, will Mr. Krupp, will you please call the roll on second consideration?
Jobgin? Yes. Sorry. Ardone?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Burkeholder?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Reinards?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. The ordinance moves to third. The community development chair recommends suspension of the rules and passage of third consideration. First, the rules need to be suspended. Is there a motion for suspension of the rules?
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second for suspension. Mr. Krupp, please call the rule for suspension.
Kelly?
No.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Jobgin?
Yes.
Burkeholder?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
And Reinards?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two nos, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended. Is there now a motion for passage of third consideration?
Still moved.
There's a motion in second for passage of third consideration. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Jobgin?
Yes.
Burkeholder?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
And Ardone?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. That resolution, sorry, motion has passed. The next item is a resolution approving the plan specifications form of contract estimate cost for the Main Street Landing project. First, before we ask for the public with comment, I will call Mr. Merritt up to give a brief presentation, please.
Good evening, everyone. Clay Merritt, Engineering and Capital Projects. So just wanted to briefly provide a presentation that hopefully has answered some of the questions that have popped over, popped up over the last few weeks. Also, and then I'll, at the very end, I'll actually call Chad Dyson. He is our Director of Parks and Recreation, and then he can go over any questions regarding maintenance and operations of the park as well. Sorry. Uh-uh. Brian, if you don't mind, next slide. Sorry. So a little bit of the reasons of why we're here today. So obviously, we've had over 20-plus years of formal planning efforts for our entire riverfront. This includes the area that we're talking about today. Throughout all the different visions that have occurred, they've always tried to enact a world-class riverfront across the entire piece. And so that's really the driving, the backbone of why we're here. And then next slide, Brian. And then the specific reason of what we're looking at today first started when the federal government approved the American Rescue Plan Act. From that point, the council at the time sought out public opinion from the community, took that, took what that input, and then prioritized into a set of projects. That set of projects is what is right here in front of us today. With the one in particular is Main Street Landing. It is the next phase at roughly $6 million. Next slide, Brian. Shortly thereafter, or probably like six to eight months after the fact, the state of Iowa released a discretionary grant program through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And specifically, it looked at placemaking. And this is from their particular site. They're looking at developing regionally significant quality of life projects. We felt that our project would be competitive in this discretionary grant program, and so we put together what we thought was a good package, brought that in front of the city council and mayor, and then asked, is this something you would like us to pursue? So we put that in front of then council as in form of a resolution. That was approved, and so we submitted our grant application. Not all grant applications we go for were successful with, but thankfully for this one we were, and we were awarded alongside with a partnership with the FIGI $9.6 million for the project. Next cycle. So this basically, from that standpoint, we've actually got other funding sources after the fact into this project as well, but that's really where we get to the size and scope of where we stand today. In terms of the challenges that we face and how we are then going to solve them, I'll first go over a couple of things related to the CPKC rail line that bisects our riverfront. First, it would be building a pedestrian bridge over from the north side of the tracks to the south side. You can kind of see it here in this image, kind of it's called out. Not only is this for aesthetic purposes and for the project itself, for really access from the north side to the south side along our riverfront, but it's also there for public safety purposes. So we've specifically made sure it's designed that our fire and police personnel can get their utility vehicles, and really what we're talking here is they're John, I'm going to use, I don't know if they're specifically John Deere gators, but you kind of get the gist of what they have. Anytime you see it in our large-scale festivals, they have those present. You see them, you know, for BICs, for example, they're always there. So they can get there in the case that any number of these crossings are blocked, we can get our emergency personnel over there and to the south side of the tracks. Next slide, Brian. Another way we are building into this particular project that's in front of you is changes in elevations. Specifically, I apologize, I wish this thing worked, but built into the nestled into the south side is where we have probably our highest concentration of people, and that's in our adventure play area. And you'll actually see, this is a heat map based on elevations. That's actually the biggest piece of what is a landscape berm that's built for a physical barrier between where we'll have as higher quality level of play and the rail system in play. I mean, at its height, this is, we're talking eight to nine feet tall, so it is significant in size. That actually then goes into our flood, which, before I touch base on that, I know there were questions regarding engineering as it relates to this, and was this done? Yes, we did perform geotechnical engineering along the side. We do that at the very beginning of the project. That was performed by Terricon. It's a national company. They obviously have local offices here. So that was performed. In addition to that, the plan set, so if I were to bring the physical plan set to you, it's about 200-page, you know, 11 by 17 documents, about this thick. It is signed and sealed by about 10 different professionals in their respective field. So there's going to be signed and stamped by these people. This is civil engineers, this is structural engineers, landscape architects, architects, electrical, plumbing, mechanical engineers, and the like. So just letting you know that. In addition to that, is an 800-page corresponding specifications that come along with this as well. And built within, in that is that geotechnical report. Moving along to flooding, sorry, wasn't quite ready. Thanks, Brian. And so oftentimes, we're like, well, you're building this where it floods. And the answer is yes, we are. We, all along of our riverfront, it floods. It floods in Leclerc Park, Centennial Park, but that hasn't stopped the city over the last decade. There's a baseball stadium there that's won multiple awards over time. We have park system, our park system is throughout our nine miles, so that hasn't stopped our people in the history of doing that. You just have to make sure you do so in a smart way. That's, that's one of the main purposes of us hiring the consultant that we hired, Sasaki and Associates. They've actually done this in other areas of the country where it actually floods as well. So we wanted to make sure we hired someone who can design something, who has a history of designing something in this similar style situation. One of the key elements of handling that is elevating, is bringing in and providing increased elevations. So the map you see in front of you right now is a flood inundation map, and so based on elevations. And this one in particular, I know originally we rolled through a series of these. This one I put up here is River Stage 20. So this is the river stage that we experienced this year. So if this park was constructed and was already in place, this is what it would look like if you had an aerial view. So as you can see, most of the larger areas that receive higher levels of finish are actually elevated out of the typical flood, of flooding that we receive. So that's both the multi-use space along with the adventure play area. So most of your expensive assets are actually elevated out of the way. If we were to go through, you know, stage 21, 22, it starts getting into that, but I would say that is not typical that we see if you look at river flooding over time. And even if it gets to that point, it's made of materials that can be able to wash off, cleaned off, for us to be able to then, once the river recedes, get back to enjoying the river. This year alone, we were at River Stage 20 for four days, River Stage 19 for seven days. So you can see in terms of the time span of the last year, it's a fairly insignificant amount of time as we move forward. So you can, next slide. So with that, if it's okay, Your Honor, I'll have Chad Dyson, who's our Parks and Recreation Director, come up here and speak about operation maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. We had some questions about more details in regards to the operational costs, so happy to provide some additional details. The labor cost, the $160,0987. This includes a full-time maintenance specialist, a year-round part-time park attendant, a year-round part-time hoard laborer, and then four year-round part-time park attendants. Primarily, the thing to note here is that this is in addition to the overall riverfront park system. The thing to note is that our operation system, we operate in districts and the riverfront being one of them. I know there's been concerns expressed about the overall riverfront. This staffing model will also help to improve that and help that crew expand their maintenance capabilities along the whole nine mile. So I just want to note that. Annual supply cost, this is our per acre cost for various things like flood cleanup, supplies, turf, plantings, other things. That is $61,986. And then we also have a one-time capital outlay, which would not be a reoccurring expense, but this would be the initial equipment setup, largely driven by the ice maintenance requirements to maintain the ice ring. And, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Merritt? No? Mr. Dyson? Very good. Okay. Is there any public with comment? Please, okay, please, someone. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Wendy Peterson, and I am the sixth ward representative for the Davenport Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Some of you already know me over time, but I wanted to say hello to everybody. On Thursday, October 15th, there was a joint meeting of the advisory board and the Riverfront Improvement Commission, and at that meeting, the Main Street Landing proposal was presented, and there was consensus of the group to accept. The action was stated in a letter to the city council by myself and Guandolin Lee, representing the Riverfront Improvement Commission. It's been 20 years, some of this you will hear because we're enthused about what we heard. It's been 20 years in the master planning of the riverfront that began with the adoption of River Vision in 2004, and eight years since the casino left the riverfront. I will have to say that I am one of the individuals that stood on the pathway to the, on the riverfront, under the bridge, and when the casino went under the bridge, I said, "Hooray, our new beginning can begin," and I was elated about that. Now's the time to take action, voting yes to the plan created by Sasaki. The plan did not happen overnight. As we know, Sasaki was selected for development of the Main Street Landing, but it was in concert with assigned Davenport staff and substantial input. You may have taken, even attendees here, with the surveys on the, at the freight house, et cetera, to get public input. The plan reflects the needs and desires of Davenport residents and challenges the providing riverfront by, but, yeah, challenge posed by the riverfront by providing a resilient landscape. Strategic changes in those elevations that was just noted, changes the elevations to reduce the possibility of flooding, protecting those amenities that you've learned about, including the adventure play area that was just spoken about and the multi-purpose site, which will have, I hope, ice skating as well outside. The idea here is all of those amenities are located at the higher levels, so they're accessible for a long range throughout the year, and the restrooms are also placed in that high site. What you will note also is the landforms provide sound mitigation, which was just spoken about, and further parking, distancing the parking, park patrons from the railroad tracks. So we're hoping with that nine-foot, you won't even know it's there except for an occasional plank, train. The pedestrian bridge that was spoken about provides easy access to the park over the railroad tracks. That also meets ADA accessibility standards throughout the park, as well as emergency access for first responders. You noted that there were meandering pathways and landscaping. This certainly creates a welcoming environment for all ages, meeting a wide range of needs for quality, family time, personal renewal, social interaction, passive reflection, and year-round use, as well as well nightlit environment. Funding was just mentioned, but funding is in place, as you have been noted, to make the Main Street Landing a reality. Leveraging those grant funds and partnerships without additional monies is a way that, that funding would not be used for this project from the city capital improvement funds. Main Street Landing, I believe, and I hope others will, will create a new exciting energy to the riverfront and the downtown and further actualize the potential for our finest asset. I encourage you to take action with a vote of yes to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judith Lee, second ward. I just want to say my comments from last week, even after listening to this, about my serious concerns with this still stand. And it's not with the park, it's with a lack of information, including safety for people using the overpass and berm over and adjacent to the tracks, and for those underneath, high operational costs identified by the city, which last week was $400,000, suddenly now it's less than $200,000, with no explanation of how that changed. The need for the geotech survey, I will be FOIAing that, Brian. The need for enforcement, both day and night, especially with the high potential for recreational motor vehicles using the overpass. Safety issues with the play tower, the potential to attract homeless folks. The city has not provided any detailed information to the council or the public regarding the expected high cost, cost for maintenance and flood. They just said, you know, it's fine. Lack of ADA compliance, the ability to actually use the multi-use site without destroying it during the transitions and a lack of fences for the use as planned. The lack of definition of just what the water feature actually entails, and the realistic lack of impact activating the use of Quinlan Court, as well as, yes, that might be above the flood, but you can't get to it after about 18 and a half. That park is closed by floodwaters. I have some additional concerns. This is the first time that any of us, including council, I assume, have seen this quote, "final site renderings." Everything up to now has been identified to council and the public as conceptual drawings, so council could vote on allowing staff to move forward for applying for grants, like we were just told, and doing some detailed designs of specific components, like the slides. I clearly asked City Administrator Spiegel from the dais at one of several requests from staff to vote on conceptual designs when and if we have hit the go-no-go vote on the park as a whole. Some of you remember her answer, and she basically said council had made enough votes that we had basically approved the project. I objected that we had not yet voted on a go-no-go on the park itself, and we had not yet seen an actual design to vote on. Last week, the at-large alderman stated that we had made a decision without a formal go-no-go vote. He also expressed concern about the sand beach and that he didn't think it was part of the design, yet here we are looking at a final design. So staff is now trying, in my opinion, to force council into a go-no-go decision on the entire park based on a vote on the plan specification form of contract, an estimate of cost for Main Street Landing, Project CIP ARPA 12. According to the resolution, the scope includes all those components, the bridge, the tower, the slide, the interactive water feature, the whole thing. Once again, staff with the mayor's apparent approval is withholding significant detailed information from council and the public regarding the site prep, but again, I will be FOIAing the geotech, necessary operational action schedules and costs, safety issues, ADA issues, and especially the costs of maintenance and flood cleanup. This is a very complicated park located in a floodplain, and I firmly believe that day-night maintenance and enforcement would be very costly. Flood resilience does not mean that cleanup is easy and cheap, just means that everything on the site doesn't get damaged or destroyed by flooding. Words matter. The access to the pedestrian walkway starts near where the motorbikes and the motorcycles congregate and where a person was recently shot and killed right near the police station. Been going on for years. I have a firm belief that they will enjoy riding their vehicles on the overpass and doing the dangerous stunts they already do on our streets. Public Works does not do flood cleanup appropriately using only a fire hose with no disinfectant. I've watched the fire department spray the chairs at the benchell and spray Quinlan Court. That's all they do. Public Works hasn't even cleaned up after the left, the last flood, the mud and vegetation debris along the riverfront. It's bad. Don't take my word for it. Take a walk and check it out. Once again, I beg you to table this go-no-go decision until you have the information you need. Maybe it's this thick, but you need the information to make an informed decision. I want to know the schedule for the necessary geotech survey, or has it already been done? The final, final rendering, addressing your concerns, Alderman Grip? Details on scheduling, costs, and operations, including personnel needed, and costs. Oh?
Thank you, ma'am.
This is not a free park.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please table.
Next, please.
Shaw Shagnon, Third Ward. And I was going to say, when these plans were started, we did not have the problems in Davenport that we have now. And could someone have foreseen the condition the city is in at that point? Probably not. And as she just said, someone was killed down there. That was a student, the murderer, the alleged murderer, recent student of UT, over in Moline that came over here to cause chaos, and he did that. Building things is not going to make that stop. I have concerns, too, based on what has happened since I've been coming to these meetings. Deferred maintenance at the Annie Whitmire complex worth $22 million. It's related. It's related.
Please get to that point.
Because how can we defer maintenance on one piece of property worth $22 million but dedicate half a million to another non-existent piece of property that you all want to bring in? That is obviously not for the residents, but it really is for the visitors that come to this city. I spent some time at the riverfront in the last couple of days. I have a background in facilities management. We had ponds. We had to bring in swans to get rid of the geese. You have geese down there. They're not going to move when you bring this in. The geese are going to keep coming back. And then if you get rid of the geese, then you're going to have the ducks, the wildlife, as well as the people around here that do not respect individuals and/or property. They do not even respect themselves, will not respect this property. The nine-to-10-foot berm is also a concern. You're going to block the view of what is already a fantastic riverfront view. Everyone agrees that the weather is getting more extreme. You can make judgments based on past flooding statistics, but we need to pay more attention to what's been happening in the last several years. And this summer, our flooding had nothing to do with the spring rains or the winter thaws up north. It had to do with late summer rains up north that came its way down here. So we can't predict the weather and/or the flooding based on the past trending, because everyone knows that the weather is getting more extreme. And that's the last of my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Jaja Condon. I'm a Third Ward resident. I live downtown with my family. And former at-large alderman, I startled myself when I voted in favor of the proclamation just now. So it's still in my blood, I guess. I wanted to speak from the heart today. There's a lot of facts and figures, but if your heart's not in something, it's really not worth much, and that includes your community. So to my mind, one of the most important responsibilities that you learn, that the City Council holds, is to be the through line on charting courses that take more than a two-year term. You really need to understand the intention and the work that went into some of these plans. And there is a real cost to sway in multiple directions. That said, I still remember being in my dorm room 24, 23 years ago, sitting there and showing my college roommate how cool my hometown was because of everything that we planned to do. So this is not something that's being done quickly or without great thought. In fact, it's been, for me, painfully slow. But the other thing is, when it comes to nice amenities like that, I think you need to do it right or not do at all. And there's never been an easier time to be in favor of this, because there's such a serendipity of funding and opportunity to get this done without setting generations of taxpayers backwards to pay for it. Really, we've got a great opportunity here. So what is the cost of return to doing something when it comes to investing in arts, culture, or quality of life? Or what's the cost of not doing something? Like I said, I still remember the moment that I saw this announced in my dorm room, and from there, I decided to come home and get into the family business. And I did so with a great passion for where I lived, which at the time I chose to live in the village of East Davenport. And I founded my business here in Davenport, and have invested in great ways in Davenport. It was volunteering for the Blues Fest, of all things, down on the riverfront, right there, that got me so excited about doing some public service, and had an opportunity to volunteer with River Action throughout the years and give back to the community in that way. Chose to live in Davenport, raised my family in Davenport, and invested in multiple businesses. One of the neatest things I've ever gotten to do was, as part of a partnership, build the large 400-river apartment building that overlooks this future riverfront. And we were able to secure funding for that, in part, based on the promise of the things that the city had promised to invest in their own riverfront. So while my resume is not totally tremendous, you do that 10 more times, you maybe have half a Jim Russell, you know? So the things that you do to invest in quality of life, or the things that make the future businessmen, the future leaders, the future, just people that want to raise a family, decide to call Davenport home and stay in the community, or come to the community and then stay in the community. You know, in your own home, if you ever get ready to sell it, you look around and you recognize that there's blemishes and embarrassing things that you've become blind to over the years. And the fact of the matter is, I think that is our riverfront. My family and I spent a great deal of time down there. But that area has been underutilized for over 20 years, and since the casino left, it's been goose poop and mutt. And, you know, we need to realize that the thing that we claim to be our greatest asset, I don't think any of us are proposing to do nothing down there. Surely, we're not going to just leave it barren. When you don't activate a space, it becomes the path of least resistance for undesirable activities. When you look at all of the downtown, where, again, I live and work and play, you know, it's the areas where we have storefronts that are activated, and there's people present and around, and there's some vitality to it. So while, while I don't know that you'll ever fully dissuade the actions of people that want to cause trouble, I know that they don't go in the area that they know that they're going to be seen and caught. So I'll just finish with, you know, I went to Red, White &amp; Boom just the other day, and it felt like it had been a very long time since I had been on the riverfront enjoying it. And it felt like I had come home again. I was down there with my family. There was a lot of happy faces. We had beautiful weather. It was a great time. And really, that's where I fell in love with Davenport, was going to things like that. And when I was a kid, and when I came home and having a chance to volunteer. The river is really what ties us together as a community. And, you know, I brought my kids here not to guilt you guys into voting in favor of this, although if it's working, that's all right. I wanted them to have a sense of ownership about this future plan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Olson, and I am the at-large representative of the Riverfront Improvement Commission. The commission collectively met with the Parks Department and city staff, thoroughly reviewing the renderings and plans for the Main Street Landing project. We are unanimously in favor of moving this initiative forward, and have also provided you with a signed letter of agreement reflecting this position. We believe this project is an excellent rejuvenation of the riverfront, a strategic use of funding, and that the city should vote to approve this investment. We also believe this will be something our entire community can be proud of, and will be a great catalyst for future economic growth, not just for the riverfront, but for the entire city of Davenport. Main Street Landing will not just be a valuable amenity to our citizens, but will also provide us with an incredible narrative to share with investors, granters, visitors, and newcomers about our collective dedication to improving our community. Lastly, regarding any possible council concerns as to the ongoing maintenance of Main Street Landing, I speak for the commission and our collective commitment to being an active partner with the city to provide multiple creative and fiscally prudent ways to ensure this investment is viably sustained over the long term. Again, we adamantly encourage the council to support this critical and beneficial investment for the city of Davenport and its riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
William Pamper, Seventh Ward. I'm not going to have all the big old speech and all them fancy words and phrases. Come down to it is simple physics. When you displace water, where's the water going to go? All right? You restrict the water. What's it going to do? It's going to back up. So what you do here is going to affect that door, East Davenport, by displacing the water. Number two is the riverfront has been a commercial landing since the beginning of Davenport. Used to be riverboats come there, and they used to unload, go rail cars, people get on and off the boats. So why are we taking, making something out of basically a floodplain zone? Endless amount of money is going to be put into this between the park, maintenance, the flooding, the cleanup, money that can be spent better elsewhere in a city. You know, common sense. Downtown is not the center of Davenport anymore. It's expanding. We need to spend money elsewhere besides just the downtown, especially a park and a floodplain zone that basically is going to continue, continuous amount of maintenance over the years. It's a floodplain zone. Again, a floodplain zone. It has been for thousands of years. Why are we trying to make something out of a floodplain that Mother Nature basically intended to be a floodplain zone? Yes, it floods. I understand that. Leave it open so the water can flow. Let Mother Nature do her course on the flooding. Yeah, we'll have to go back and clean up. It's open. It's airy. The more you put in there to block the view, which basically this is the reason we've never built a flood wall, so you can see the river. So the more stuff you put between River Drive and the river, blocks the view. Simple physics. Leave it open. Leave it as a floodplain. The more you block the river, the faster the current will be coming through here, and you're going to have backup to the north. It's nothing but another man-made, man-made disaster in the making. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Joyce Miller, Third Ward. This is a $24 million project. City of Davenport is not having to pay any money to build this. It's coming from grant funding, relief fund funding. Okay, but we are going to be paying for the maintenance on this. All of my other notes here has already been talked about with the amounts of the funding and everything else going on, so I'm not going to repeat it. But two years ago, I was planning a family reunion. I walked around to, or drove around to the parks, checking them out, where would be the best place to go, the nicest place. Some of the parks, I didn't even get out of my car. I drove in there, looked around, and left. There was no way that I was going to have a picnic at any of those places. We need to take care of the parks we have and not worry about spending money like this on a new park. Yes, Main Street Landing is a very nice concept, but not at the expense of our other parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Gary Eklund. I live in Davenport, Iowa. I am 100% opposed to this. It's my opinion right now that Davenport, Iowa has the worst city government in the United States. It's not representative of the community.
Gary.
It's disproportionate.
Gary, I'm not going to give you much leeway. Stay on focus.
The planners of this do not represent the city. They represent wealthy, white people. Pure and simple. They do not represent the interests of the city. We have spent enough money wastefully. We have projects that could be done. I was at Lookout Hill the other day, and I thought, you know, it's grass. We could terrace that. You could do a strip of milkweed, a strip of red carnations, a strip of blazing star, a strip of purple cornflowers, strips of other plants that the city declared illegal in my yard that are legal in my yard. We could plant that hillside, and it would be a self-sustaining hillside with perennial flowers that came back every year, that didn't take a lot of maintenance. You didn't have to mow the grass. That's a current, existing, city-owned park that we could easily spend a little bit of money on and improve the situation for monarch butterflies, improve the situation for hummingbirds. And since you won't legally allow me to grow flowers in my yard, somebody could plant them somewhere, since you have a Nazi squad. This is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize for that, but this is a waste of money. I remember, I was here and talked to people when they built this, what they call the Sky Bridge now, or what I call the Bridge to Nowhere. I remember that there was a concern years ago about the Bridge to Nowhere in Alaska, that cost millions of dollars. This multi-millions of dollars Bridge to Nowhere, people may not remember, but the casino, which I know you're familiar with the casino and the casino's financial interests. The casino, the casino didn't get customers during 1993, the river flooded. The casino didn't get customers. And so they decided it would be really nice if the taxpayers built a bridge so that pedestrians could get to the casino if it flooded again. That's the reason why we have that Sky Bridge. And I remember talking to people who got paid $10,000 a month back then already. And they said, oh, the casino, they said, this is a, this bridge is going to be, some of them said, this bridge is going to be like the arch in St. Louis, and people will come to see this bridge because it's going to be a tourist attraction. And then I remember another one, a little bit more honest, who said, well, you know, if we don't waste this money in Davenport, they'll just waste it in Cedar Rapids, and the building trades get jobs building this Sky Bridge. And, you know, so some money gets to the contractors, and some money gets to the building trades industries. And then the casinos got its bridge. So essentially, we spent, what, how much was that bridge? 10, 20, 30 million dollars?
Mr., please stay on Main Street Landing.
We, we should be spending this money better than that. And I suggest, again, the natatorium, I'm sure they have the plans, I'm sure they have the specifications. We could rebuild the natatorium. We could rebuild the Leclerc pool. We could rebuild the bathhouse. We could add some sprinklers. You spray off the mud when it floods. And I, again, want to mention, there is a great need for a 324 Main Street, a Davenport Hotel, 324 Main Street Memorial Park. And that's not going to cost a lot of money, at least in the plans that I've done. You know, the maintenance costs will not be $160,000 a year, since it's mostly perennial flowers and milkweed and other food crops like raspberries. This is an extraordinary waste of money. And over and over again, the City Council kind of says, screw you to the bottom half of the city. They don't say it out loud because they're not that honest, but the city just wastes money. I know there are people who live, I know some people, and I'm thinking of in particular, who live in a house that I think they bought for $600,000, which amazingly is only assessed at $500,000.
Thank you. You're done. Sit down. That's enough.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. You're done. Thank you.
I gave you much more leniency than I should have. Next, please.
Jessica Noel, Second Ward. The only concerns that I have with this is the safety. I mean, down at the Main Street Landing, where the Sky Bridge is located, that's been a part of one of the stops for the loop since at least the '70s that I know of. My mom drove the loop. I drove the loop. My daughter drove the loop. And my concern is the fact that you put this park in here. Just because you put this park in here doesn't mean that the people are going to relocate. My concern is the crotch gremlins using the overpass as a ramp. And God knows what other things that can happen with people down there with their kids. My other concern is the maintenance on this place. Can we show the same concern as far as maintaining the bathrooms at our other locations on the riverfront, like the skate park or Marquette Landing? I've shared this with my aldermen and several other aldermen. Have any of you guys stopped and looked at the bathrooms down at the skate park or down at Marquette Landing? If you haven't, you should go check it out. But if we're going to maintain this area on the riverfront, we need to maintain all the attractions on the riverfront.
Thank you. Next, please.
David Anderson, Ward Five, Back to the Future. 20 years ago or so in AOL, I'd discovered Edgar Cayce, The Sleeping Prophet, and has collaborated in future maps of the world. I brought a picture of it in here, and I forgot all about it. Today, the future maps of the world are coming true, and... Um, today, the future maps of the world are coming true in Africa, limited areas where the riverfront primitive people that are being flooded out of their homes that they've lended in for longer than I could comprehend on time, and I can comprehend a lot. Um, this will be underwater guaranteed, there's, I live in the future, it's not easy, it's, you know, mind-bending sometimes, but it's been prophesied so many times, so many ways, so many people, it's guaranteed, the East Coast, West Coast, and 30 years ago, somebody asked me, why I live here? Why do you live in a place that's going to be flooded? And still I sit here asking myself, why? Because I love Davenport, that's why I'm not going to move from here. When it floods, I'll probably be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, next please.
Yeah, Paul Vasquez, Third Ward Team, Davenport. Um, it's a great idea, once again, and I've, I've said some of these things before, I agree with both sides of the arguments. You need the amenities, but what about everything else? And I said that before. Take a look at Credit Island, what's gone, and I've talked about this. Ball diamonds are gone, the golf course is gone, some of the playgrounds are gone, the statues are gone, there's no restroom availability, and then when it floods, you lose the whole park. And I, you know, I've slowed down in my life, I go to the parks, go to the restrooms. I've said that before. I should take a picture. I leave the restrooms and my eyes sting, I should go use a bush, then I get arrested. You have, you've planned, oh my God, you know, we, we've laid this whole thing out, what about the other parks? What about everything else? You, you can't sit up here and keep building bigger and better all across the board while the foundation's crumbling. Look at everything else in this city. You know, you're, you're trying to draw more people, that's all the city's trying to do with even that, a playground. I think there's a huge mistake being made downtown. I really do. To, to me and all the other old guys I talk to, it's nothing but a, a, a bar. You know, I won't go down there because I, I can't find any place to park. And bigger and better, let's draw more people. It's going to create both sides of what you've heard, you're going to have more trouble, you're going to have more expense, but that can't be the focus. What about everything else? What about everybody else? That's what you guys just don't seem to pay attention to. It's, it's been said by many people, the same argument. You know, I, I sat here and I said, I've been, I've lived in, in, uh, in Davenport 68 years. At first, a couple of years I got married, I lived in Bettendorf. I, I've been here my whole life. The same arguments, the same things, crime, housing, everything, that was argued when I was young, that my dad argued, is still being argued.
Mr. Vasquez, stay on Main Street Landing.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing. You always, your focus is everything improving and bigger and better and more drawl while the other problems just sit and ferment. That's my issue with it. It's great, take that same budget, put an attendant in the other parks, clean, clean everything else up, make everything else presentable the way you want to do there, but you're going to have flooding problems, just like Credit Island. And I think, this is just my opinion, the reason those things are gone is you got tired of paying for it. Same thing as Annie Whittenmeyer. You got tired of paying for it. The city, the people, everything can't be on a profit-loss basis. That's a huge mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
What kind of Dixon, Seventh Ward? I just want to say I am so excited about this project because the homeless people are going to have a new wonderful place to hang out at, and I'm pretty sure it's going to be beautiful, you know what I'm saying? So they're going to have a good view. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
I meant the truth.
Please, please, thank you. All right, um, well, alderman, please move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion from alderfolks?
Yes.
Alderwoman Burkholder.
I agree that this is a beautiful idea. Um, I think, I think it could be fantastic. However, our river floods, I think the maintenance of, of what we're doing now, um, prices go up, we've seen inflation. How are we going to do it? The safety issues, are we going to build a cage that goes over that, that bridge so people can't jump off of it? Or i- is that even part of the design? It, I don't know. Um, showing the 20-foot, foot stage, you can't even get to the park. So I, I still have questions on this. Um, again, I think it's a beautiful idea, it's a beautiful concept, but it's going, it, it still has a lot of work to be hammered out before I can even think about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kell.
Thank you for my time. I've always said, it's an interesting project, and my, my choice words of interesting, so the young lady said that they have creative ways. What are your creative ways? The words sound amazing, but what are the creative ways? Give some examples of what you guys are willing to do so other people can co-sign and jump on. Um, they always talk about a sense of community. Um, a neighborhood would like to have a quality of life. This is a big city with 100,000 people, what about us? I live in one of the most heavily populated area with some of the wealthiest people in the city of Davenport, and we don't have a quality of life. The East Village gets no love, no attention, and I'm saying it, it don't. It, so there's just a lot of stuff going on the east side that is just like, we want the same things that the rest of the city wants, and there's people that I've talked to about this numerous amounts of times, so if you guys, you, you can roll your eyes, you can do whatever you want, but I'm just explaining to you that when you talk about a sense of community and a quality of life, what about the rest of the city of Davenport? They don't deserve a sense of community and a quality of life and a park that they can take their families to and enjoy those parks as well? Because I'm telling you, when I grew up, Lindsey Park was the bomb, they had the parks, uh, park board, we used to go down there. We would, they would have the park attendants that would play with us, there was a big box that had games, and so there was just random things that I can remember of growing up here. So I, I'm happy for these amenities, but who, who's all going to be able to drive and enjoy these amenities? You know what I'm saying? Is there going to be a bus system that's going to be able to drive by the river to have folks get dropped off so they can actually enjoy these as well? So there's just a lot of questions that I've had since I've been on council and continuously still have been on council, and I still go back to quality of life, community, and neighborhood. Nobody else deserves that? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reinhart.
Thank you, um, this is a question for Director Dyson, is he here? Does your equipment expense include Zamboni for taking care of the ice?
It does, it includes, not a Zamboni, that's a trade term, but an ice resurfacer, yes.
Okay, the, those require a lot of maintenance, only because...
Uh, this particular model is a pull behind, both given to the, the size of the rink. The rinks we have at, at, uh, River's Edge, we have full Olympias that are battery-driven. This is pulled behind by a tractor, uh, less maintenance on this one.
Okay, and, and what are we going to do with the refrigeration system, the piping that we lay down to generate the ice? Where is that going to go in the summertime when it's too warm outside to generate ice?
So the piping's inclusive of the, the multiflex area, so similar to River's Edge, the ice rinks, it's incorporated within the concrete surface of the rink. So it's, it's embedded, so to speak, so it doesn't need to be removed or replaced, it's part of the system.
And what if there's a leak?
Uh, if there's a leak, we would have to, uh, hire it and maintain it, yeah. And we have those from time to time at River's Edge.
All right, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dyson, actually, I do have a sorry, a question for you as well, uh, in reference to the rink, so I, I too, I want to echo what, uh, Alderman Kelly mentioned about the East Village. I grew up in that area as well, and I remember when Lindsey Park used to be, uh, very enjoyable. And I, I know that there's been some discussion or some, uh, questions rather about perhaps putting an ice rink in the East Village, are you familiar with that?
Yep.
I know if we put an ice rink downtown Davenport, is it possible to also put an ice rink in the East Village?
Yeah, there, there's two approaches that we've discussed, right? You have the permanent infrastructure, similar to what's being proposed in Main Street Landing, or there is the, uh, basically flood, Mother Nature, uh, lying version, so either one could be explored. Uh, I think my discussions early on with the village of East Davenport reps, uh, would be more of the latter, the, the, uh, um, fill-in liner version, uh, similar to what we, uh, have done at Vandemere in the past.
Thank you, that's all I have for you right now, I appreciate your time. Um, with that being said, I, I do have concerns about, um, maintenance as well, uh, specifically the, um, skate park in, in Marquette, as I've, I've mentioned before to staff. Um, and, and I, I do have great concerns of the, the amount of money that we're spending on this one project when we, we obviously know that there are several parks that are in dire need of, of more funding. However, I do believe in investing in your community, and sometimes we have to spend money to make money. I do believe that, um, a downtown, this Main Street project would attract more folks to the Quad City area. Um, I've, I've done some extensive research on Sasaki, they have some really successful projects and, um, they seem to know what they're doing, and, and they've proven that time and time again. Uh, look up the, uh, uh, since, city of Cincinnati and, and their project there. It's a wonderful project and it has, uh, certainly, um, added to their economy. So, um, I, I, and this is a, a plan from what I'm understanding is in 20 years in the making. I know extensive, uh, planning has gone into it, I certainly was not a part of it. Um, but in the short period of time that I've been here and the research that I've done on the Main Street Landing project, um, I have 100% outweighed the pros and the cons. And, um, I do firmly believe that it will help grow our economy and with those funds, perhaps we can take and invest, reinvest back into our community. Um, so I will be supporting this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple of questions maybe for Director Dyson, or if not Director Merritt, we'll see. I just want a clarification on one of the slides that was presented regarding the costs, maintenance specifically. Uh, does that include flood cleanup?
Correct, yes.
Does that, do the costs for this...
I'm sorry, that's included in the supply line item, yes.
The supply line item, okay. The 60-some thousand, that's the flood cleanup, okay. Um, the cost for this, the maintenance of this park, is it taking away from the maintenance, um, budget that we have for the other parks?
No, we're currently asking for additional funding, new funding for this.
Okay. And in regards to the funding and the budget, will this fall within the budget? And maybe this is a question for our acting administrator.
Yes, um, before Mallory Merritt left, um, they, we worked through this with her and the finance team as far as using our LST funds, um, that have grown over the course of the last several years.
And is there sufficient funds to cover such maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, last question, uh, regarding the, the funding for the actual project, just for clarification. The grants received, like the ones from the state, cannot be transferred to anything else, correct?
That's my understanding, correct, yes.
All right, I, I don't have any other questions. I do want to take a moment to thank, uh, Director Merritt for that presentation. I know after the last council meeting, there were a lot of questions, reasonable questions, I mean, not, not all community members or even everyone on council knows all the information that's taken place since 2014. So getting that additional information and presenting it to the, the city and to our constituents was very, very helpful, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Alder, uh, sorry, Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can we have somebody address the funding aspect of this project and where, where the funds are coming from and...
Sure, so, um, originally, uh, or excuse me, there's a, a number of funding sources coming for this, um, particularly the local, um, funds are from the original 6 million dollars, it was of the ARPA allocation, um, that you saw on the screen, that, um, the previous council allocated. In addition to that, um, part of the, uh, Canadian Pacific, Kansas City Southern merger was the council, um, had discussions with them on how we can mitigate some of those increased train traffic. Um, and so naturally, um, so the council kind of saw how the, that merger process was going to go, um, and kind of did, um, a number of research and noticed that the federal government isn't normally, um, stop mergers, uh, from trains happening, especially when we have, um, issues of logistics, um, occurring. So we kind of saw that that was going to be happening anyway, and so, um, one of the reasons we worked with CPKC to establish some funding for mitigation. And so that, um, from that bucket of money came another 6 million dollars, and specifically that's for, um, the quiet zones, which we didn't talk about, um, specifically today because that's not built into this, um, particular agenda item, that's a separate item, um, but it's for, um, quiet zones, it's for, um, other mitigation efforts like the pedestrian bridge, or in this case, um, other, I think, from, excuse me, other items based in there. There was talk of a second pedestrian bridge as well as the, um, South Concord Bridge, um, over, um, uh, over the railroad tracks south of River Drive, so that was out of those, those buckets of money as well. In addition, we have State of Iowa's Destination Iowa Program, RDA and SCRA has also contributed funding for this project, um, and we have been able to get funding through the FRA to help with the quiet zone as well. So there's a, I think, five different, um, types of funding sources built within the overall project, um, that is Main Street Landing.
Thank you, and so we, previous councils have, have agreed in the budget to put a million dollars every year into the riverfront, which we peeled that back, to put back into the general fund to do other projects within the city, correct?
Correct, so, um, what occurred is when the ARPA allocation for the original 6 million, um, for Main Street Landing went in, um, the, uh, the agreement or the direction from that, that council was remove the million dollars per year out of the six-year plan, um, since it went to the ARPA, and instead that, um, opened up funding to do the flood mitigation, um, structural solutions. So from that million, it, it then transitioned into flood. So since that time, the council's allocated a million dollars a year for, uh, flood mitigation, which is some of the structural projects that are ongoing right now.
Okay, now, the big question is, what are we going to do? We, I know we had this, me and Alderman Jodden had this concern, what, what are we going to do when we have cost overruns? Because we said we're going to live within this budget of this project.
Correct, so, um...
Within this budget of this project.
That has been the direction that's been provided to staff, and that is what we've been, um, marching towards. So throughout, so, design is an iterative process, it happens over, in this particular case, over a year, year and a half, really a year and a half. And so as we have checkpoints in with our consultant, we get cost estimates. When they come in a little too high, that's when you start doing value engineering, and that's when you start redesigning a couple of elements. Now, we have stayed true to the elements and the components that have built within it, so I would actually reference back to the city council's, um, approval of the grant application, and all of those components are still there. It's just whether or not we have to make sure we fit within our budget. And so we've been closely tracking that and we're currently on pace. And I would say, uh, the last and final, um, opinion of probable cost that we got back from Sasaki is in alignment with our budget. Now, what's in front of me today is to give, um, staff the approval to go out to bid. Obviously, estimates are estimates based, um, by, uh, you know, engineers and landscape architects and architects based on past projects. You're, you're trying to predict the future, um, when you're, when you're putting these things together. So that's the next, um, step along the way, if that's the council's desire, is to go out to bid and see what that actual cost is. But currently, right now, as we stand, we are within, um, the budget that we were, um, told to do.
And we are going to stay within the budget.
That is, yes, that is, like, that is the direction that the council's provided staff, and that is what we've been doing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Grub.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief with my comments. Um, I did want to just say that, um, for anybody who has questions about the, the ice rink and, and the demand for it, uh, the, we just added that second sheet of ice because the demand for ice in the, in the Quad Cities is so strong, and it, it is typically rented to the point that it's very difficult to have open skates, uh, for the community. So I like to take my daughter down for open skates, and we end, we end up there on very odd times, on, on different nights, because we can't routinely have, uh, open skates for the community because the ice has such high demand, so adding a sheet of ice will, will be welcome. Um, you, you know, really what I want to say, I've, I've said this for a long time, oftentimes the city of Davenport, I, I feel it's like suffers, uh, from its inability to, to have a vision. Um, we are a community that's very good in being able to point out why things will not work, uh, we sometimes have... We sometimes have trouble trying to figure out solutions to make things work. This is one of those things that we have worked very hard to hear the concerns with the project and address those concerns and I feel very strongly that we have. And so to be short and try to provide a vision, the city of Davenport is River City, USA. We are known because the Mississippi River runs east to west in the city of Davenport. This region was settled by traders because of the ability to move things up and down the Mississippi River. And 115 years ago, I have a picture that I keep in my house of what the Davenport River Front looked like and it really wasn't pretty. And W.D. Peterson, the father of the Davenport levee, went to Germany and he had looked at the rivers that they had there and they were these great places for recreation and commerce and enjoyment of the people. And he came back and he said, this is what we're going to do in Davenport. We are going to be a river city where people enjoy the river. And an act of Congress created the Levee Improvement Commission. And they built the seawall and they built the fountain and they built a lot of things in Davenport. And since then, the city has endeavored to improve the riverfront and solidify itself as a river town and River City, USA. And this is the next step in that. The casino leaving gives us the opportunity of doing what we intended to do 20 years ago, right? Everybody jokes, even my kids will joke with me from time to time about the bridge to nowhere, but please understand that 20 years ago, it was not the bridge to nowhere. It was a bridge to a world-class park that hasn't been built yet. And what we needed was the casino boat to move, which it did. And as Ms. Peterson said, when it left, it opened the opportunity for us to continue the story of what our riverfront is. And I, you know, I'm glad to be a part of that. I hope my colleagues will support this. We've worked very hard on it and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, I appreciate what everybody, all the questions tonight and I understand concerns. I, you know, as the Alderman represents the third word, which is included in, but it's much more than downtown area. I will continue to work to make sure that the things, and I do and I don't talk about it a lot, but the things that are disruptive, that make people uncomfortable in areas of the word I represent, I work behind the scenes to try to remediate those, to look for solutions. I'll continue to do that because it is a wonderful place and we all deserve to enjoy it. I've said before, my first meeting was 20 years ago for this project. And I remember at that time, one of the discussions was one of the options for the, just when the casinos were allowed to come off the water. It was at this time this was happening and one of the proposals that was made was to build the casino on the riverfront. So to build a private casino on the riverfront, on that square we're talking about now. But the problem was that we said it needs to be open to the public, it needs to be free to the public. And they, the people proposing that were unwilling to make that commitment to, that it be open. There were other things that came after that proposals for this area and the people that were bringing those private, and private money is great, but they were unwilling to make it all public. And the city, and I wasn't involved then, the city said no. And so this is, this is going to be the people's place. It is free, there is no cost, it's not a fancy building somewhere that you have to pay to use. This is free for all. This is free for whatever your income, whatever your station in life. This is, this is going to be free and I think that's very important to remember. There are things being built around the Quad Cities that are wonderful, but it costs money to do them. This is not going to cost the people of Davenport or anybody else who comes anything to participate in and I think that's really important. And I'm glad that we have been able, because I remember those discussions, to keep the riverfront free. I think that's important to remember as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, anybody else before I go to someone's second? Alderman Reinhardt.
Thank you again. I think this is a great plan. It's been 20 years in the making for planning. If we take the next step and say, okay, find the concept we like, how long is the, what's the buildup time? What are we looking at in terms of completion to the ultimate goal of what we're all thinking about?
So I will say the next step, if it's the council's direction to do so, would be to go out to bid. And so that's another probably five, because of the size and scope of the project and there'll be a lot of questions from the contracting community, probably five, six-plus weeks for it to be out to bid. If we, once we receive those bids, we will then bring an action back before this council. So much like we do with every single construction project we have, we do a public hearing, we do plans and specifications and then we go out and we secure a contract and then we bring it for your approval or for your denial. That'd probably be the step number one. Step number two is once we have contracts in place, construction of this particular project is roughly, I would say, a year and a half plus as we go, as we move forward.
So basically pie in the sky, if it all goes well and everything comes in on budget as it relates to your quotes and your request for bid, in two years we'll have it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Lynch.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. McGinnis, come back up. I was trying to catch you before you turned around. Just a follow-up question. Is there, is there a cushion in the budget? So I'm sure with your experience and budgets and going out to bid, even if we award a contract and then the contractors, they start the work, I'm sure this is similar to probably like a plumbing estimate. Sometimes you don't know what you're going to find until you start to open things up, right? So we have a lot of infrastructure that we're doing. So is there a cushion in the budget or is there a plan in the event that we have contractors that come back after they've already been awarded the contracts with change orders that increase the price?
Yes. So all of our projects have contingencies built in. Most of our standard projects, and we're recognizing this is not a standard project, but almost every single standard project that comes before you has a contract contingency, so built within the dollar value. So let's say there's a million-dollar roadway project, there's probably a $40,000 or $50,000 contingency line built within that. And then we'll use that if items come up that are unexpected and then anything outside of that triggers our change order process, which is built within our purchasing policy. And then on top of that, so we have contingency built within the contract and we have contingency built within our account to basically double to make sure. To answer your question for this particular project, yes. So based on the engineer's final opinion of probable cost, we have contingency built within that cost and then we also have contingency built within the overall project itself, just in case things come in either over budget from, or excuse me, things come in over more what the estimate is from a bid perspective, but also from what happens during construction. Rarely is there ever a perfect project in terms of construction, so we always make sure we set aside funding to take care of those. Back to what Alderman Dunn said, the direction all along is this funding source needs to pay for this project and we don't do anything else. So we've tried our best to build in contingencies along the way.
Thank you. And is there, I would imagine a project of this magnitude would require like a full-time foreman, right? So we have several contractors involved. Is there somebody that will be specifically from the city that will be essentially babysitting this project, right? And that's the different phases and visiting, several site visits perhaps daily? Is there someone that will be assigned specifically to manage and foresee this overall project?
Yes. So within the engineering capital project department, so we have, we have civil engineers, we have also our construction team, we have project managers and then we have inspectors as well. I will reference Station 3. Station 3 was a $12 million new building. We had a dedicated project manager for particular that one. All of 53rd was roughly, I mean, both phases put together was probably in the $15 million range with federal, it had federal grants. So you're thinking audit of every single ticket, every single truck ticket that comes in, that comes through. We had a person identified for that. So to answer your question, yes, it's within our standard operating procedure to have someone specifically for this project.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, okay, Alderman Tim Dunn.
Clay, I hate to have you walk away, bud. Is there any way with this, with all the overruns that you're going to have? That's, I know how construction works, just to be honest with you. Is there any way we can start tightening up on the scope of work on these projects?
On this particular project?
Yes.
So we have, going back to contingencies built within contingencies to try our best. So there's going to be a base bid for this. We're also going to have different alternate bids. So essentially, a contractor A, or hopefully many contractors will bid on the project, they'll have a base and then they'll have alternates along the way. So we're going to have alternates that either, that we can accept and that's up to the city to decide. So like, let's say alternate 1 through 5 will actually be reductions, so they'll be removing things from the scope in order to lower the overall price. Or, you know, fingers crossed, we actually get very good bids and we want to be able to add extra things into the project. We have that put there as well. So that's in addition to the contract contingency and the contingency built within the program itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Alderman.
I don't have questions for you. You may sit down. No, I just wanted to make two comments. One regarding a concern that has been brought up regarding maintenance of other parks. And it is a concern that constituents have brought to my attention. Not too long ago, a constituent showed me a picture of a toilet at Vandavere Park where the seat didn't match the size or shape of the actual toilet. And I do believe that we can and must do better with our parks, but I also don't think that it's one or the other. It is important that the city have great amenities to, not only for its residents, but to attract new residents. One issue the city of Davenport has seen and a concern is that we have not had population growth as we should. We've had economic growth, but if we look at our population and those numbers, we just haven't seen that growth. So I do think it's important that as a council, we look towards the future as previous councils have done so, because obviously this is a prime example. This has been 20 years in the making, so someone along the way has had an idea and it's continued and that's important, but that doesn't mean that the concerns brought forth are not important concerns that we need to continue to address to ensure that all our parks are well-maintained. And yes, we have to look into what we're going to do with Credit Island or the Rockingham Corridor because all of that is just as equally important, not just downtown. We need all of Davenport, North Park Mall. So we got to take it one step at a time, but we do have to have an eye towards the future to make our city the great, the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Very good, I'll make a couple of comments then. So just a couple of themes that have been talked about and over the years and continue to be, but I just want to draw attention. So this is other people's money to leverage other people's money, not counting the maintenance, but the partnerships that were involved in the development of Main Street Landing. So just a few and some were mentioned. RDA, SCRA, FRA, the federal folks, state folks, Destination Iowa. And for people who don't understand Destination and IDA, I would develop Economic Development Authority, they just don't hand out prizes like this every day. It was a steadfast, hard sell in combination, another partner, with the FIGI. That project there in coordination with this that will be lit up at night could set the standard for riverfront development. So the state, CP, ARPA, citizen input both in locations around the city as was discussed and in citizen surveys. And then Sasaki, using them as the standard bearer for riverfront development to help us with this. And then of course, our stewards on the riverfront and parks, both our Parks Advisory Board and Riverfront Commission, the people that take ownership of these particular places and work hard every day to discuss, improve and challenge the vitality of their particular areas with the citizens, all those partners coming together to make this great amenity come to be if the council so desires. I would encourage a positive vote because over a long time and all the partnerships involved and all the different monies involved, this amenity will set the standard for riverfront development. With that, Mr. Krupp, I would ask you to please call the roll. Lynch?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Grub?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Ardun?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Reinhardt?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
And Burkholder?
No.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good, consent's approved. Next series are other ordinances, resolutions or motions that are known for tonight. Any other reports, Mr. Gleason? Okay. Next, will an Alderman move to go into executive session to evaluate the professional competency of individuals pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5 and to discuss strategy with council matters involving litigation pursuant to how to call it? Before I ask for the motion, I'm sorry, a motion, is there a motion in a second?
So move.
And before I call Mr. Krupp to call the roll, I just want to let everybody know that council will adjourn the meeting after the executive session and will not return to council chambers. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll to go into executive session. Burkholder?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinhardt?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Grub?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
And Ardun?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.